Rest is here too.
Lower that hand. Okay, we're ready to go, sir.
All right. Well, I apologize for the late start, but I have six thirty-two. And we will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough order. I see that we have a quorum present. Councilman Driggers is absent this evening. Um, so with that, we will move to our approval of our consent agenda. We have vouchers tonight totaling ninety-three thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars forty-seven cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? We also have minutes for the three twenty-one twenty-two three meeting to approve. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions, corrections, or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, then we, the third item on our consent agenda is reapproval of park shelters roof replacement at seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars. And Mr. Styles, I'll let you refresh everybody's memory.
Yeah, this is the park shelter project we approved about a, not quite a year ago. Um, we had would waited for Spring Branch Construction to do this project at the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we canceled the encumbrance on it. Um, intention of not canceling the project, but we canceled the encumbrance so that it didn't carry over into twenty twenty-three. Uh, and so what we're asking for is to reauthorize that purchase. It actually is five hundred dollars more than what we originally purchased it because of the increased material cost. So, um, yeah, it's seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars. Um, they're actually doing the work right now. So, um, we just need to reauthorize payment, so.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to set the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
A councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now move on to our first public comment opportunity. And we do have members of the public in the room. Is there anybody that would like to address the council? If you're here for a specific agenda item, you'll get a chance to us, address the council at that time. But if you'd like to address the council now, more than welcome to. Is there anybody that would like to address the council at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will close the first public comment opportunity and move on to annual department head presentation. And we have Mr. Dale Galkey, who is our streets superintendent, Mr. Galkey.
I guess I'll stand up here as you know.
That's be great. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening. Since I was here last year and gave a report, seems like a whirlwind of a year. This may will be the completion of my sixteenth year with the city. Um, I have two guys uh with me in the street department. Matt Hine has been with the city nine years. Mary Luthi has been with the city five years. Um, I'm fortunate to have these two great guys who are dedicated to performing quality level work for the city. Um, I lost Jesse Dirks from the street department who transferred to the electric department last summer, and I've not found a suitable replacement as of yet. This past year, I will mention a few other things that we've done. Uh, drainage improvements, uh, specifically across Ash Street, uh, the south end of town coming out of Willow Glen, to new culverts and some new concrete ditch lining down there. Um, that was a pretty successful project, and we had a contractor help us with some of the work, but we did most of ourselves. A successful decluttering of the museums and put together an in-person and an online city auction, uh, that went pretty well, I would say. Uh, water treatment lagoon excavation. And we recently crack sealed downtown. Um, we have not spent a lot of time on the streets other than the occasional emergency road patch, sign repair, alley fix. I'm sure there's many other things, um, little things that we do, but I didn't need to mention them all. Um, most of our time has been spent at the splash park. And we have dug out and re- compacted two basements. There was other foundations and also a couple of cisterns. We removed the concrete for the block long water project along Washington Street. After the line was installed, we poured the flow line and pavement back on the street. Then we poured approximately two hundred fifty feet of full curb and angled parking along the street. We also poured a sidewalk along this parking and associated handicap ramps at the corner of Washington and A. Um, I think all that turned out pretty good. Um, last fall and this winter, we trenched underground for the water lines coming up to the restroom and all fifteen um, zones of the spray features for the water park. We've had some difficulties ordering and receiving plumbing parts in a timely manner. We also made sure to pressure test all the lines, nothing would fail. Um, that we didn't have a lot of difficulty there. We just took a lot of time. We also have installed one sewer line to the restroom, but we have one more sewer tap to do from the splash park up to the sewer main. Um, we have poured a sidewalk around the splash pad and are scheduled to pour the splash pad next week Tuesday. Um, I've recruited some experienced labor um to help with that. Some of both Parkers guys, um, they've done work for us before and they'll bring a, a different level of expertise to the project to get that done. It's kind of a one-shot deal. We better do it right the first time. So they'll help with the pad um next week. Today, it's about sixty yards. We've also been fabricating a shade structure using steel poles, and then we'll attach fabric sails to, to provide some shade for one area there. The steel structure that we're fabricating is going to Solana in the morning to get hot dip galvanized. Um, we have quite a bit more work to do at the splash park, but it's exciting to see some visual advancements in the past few weeks. Um, we will be pouring more sidewalks, a patio area, perpendicular parking along the alley adjoining the splash park. Hopefully in a few weeks, we'll be installing irrigation, planting a few trees and shrubs and planting grass by the end of May. Um, my hopes for this summer are to have the downtown sealed. I've had a couple of estimates, but haven't made a decision on exactly what process or contractor for that. Matt and I have talked about it. We just haven't quite got things ironed out yet. I'm waiting for a couple more estimates, honestly, those haven't come in. Um, last time we chip sealed, um, anywhere in town was August of twenty twenty. We should be chip sealing every year or so, but there just aren't enough funds in the special highway fund um, from the state to cover that expense every year. Um, the city's gonna need to um add to that fund to get regular street maintenance done. Um, generally, we just kind of operated out of the special highway fund for that, but just doesn't provide enough for the maintenance we need to be doing. As you know, we are in desperate need of some streets that need rebuilding, South Lincoln, parts of Adams, Birch, Cedar B, and others, I'm sure. There are a few streets that need minimum maintenance, but if we don't chip seal those, they will be on the rebuild list soon. Uh, we do have quite a few streets that have been rebuilt in the last twelve years, and they are holding up very well. Those streets were built with concrete, which was, I believe, the right decision. A few other projects I'd, I'd like to see happen, um, I have listed in no particular order. Sidewalk repair throughout town, just mostly the older parts of town where sidewalks have just deteriorated, trees ritz have pushed them up, things like that. And also promotion of the sidewalk replacement program. Um, new sidewalks to areas like Sonic, Prairie Point, Sports Complex, Memorial Park, and along Third Street, um, where we have one house, one new house along there and then potentially a fire station on the corner. Um, like to do the downtown brick adjustments and flower planter irrigation lines. Um, I think we've talked about that before, but just need to put it on the list and get it done. Um, need to do something with the lower Adobe House Pond, probably eliminate it, maybe use that area for something else. Um, the Hillsborough Heights Pond, behind Bomb Gars, need to rip wrap it and make that thing look a little bit better and function better. Just it has so much erosion around the edges. Um, paving of Commerce and Santa Fe Streets, probably not high on some people's list, but I think that'd be nice to pave those streets where, which were at one time some kind of asphalt, but um uh, we ground that up years ago because it's so terrible and uh, turned it into gravel. Now we just blade it occasionally. Um, equipment wise, we have, we have some good pieces of equipment, but are always in need to upgrade what we have or require something we don't have. Um, this is a short list of equipment that uh, we either need to get or, or swap out for something better. Um, two new service trucks, tandem dump truck, which we've already got permission from you guys to buy. We just haven't quite found the right one. Uh, two single axle dump trucks, one or both with a snow plow. Motor greater, small tractor, large mower tractor, zero turn mower, midsize excavator, articulating trench compactor, jumping jack. Uh, we'd like to get new shop offices and expand our shop. Um, equipment storage shed. We have quite a bit of equipment at AMPI. And one of these days, that building won't be a building anymore, and so we'll have to move some of our equipment out of there, and it'll be basically out in the open. Um, we'd like to get a water truck, a large leaf vacuum, large concrete saw. I'm sure there's other things or, or more minor things, but um, that's just kind of a, a list, an ongoing list, seems like. Um, I do thank you for your support with allocating us uh, money to buy equipment, trusting us to do the work that we do. Do you have any questions?
What is the sidewalk replacement program?
I guess I hadn't heard of that. So that is a program we have where um homeowners, if they have a bad sidewalk and want it replaced, we will pay for the concrete and they will pay for or perform the labor. Oh, to install it. And uh, I think Ben goes out and measures it, and then we measure the length, width, and depth, four inches, and pay for that amount of concrete. And I think that's a pretty good program. Some have taken advantage of it. Some probably don't know about it, and we just need to maybe promote that a little bit better. Really helps homeowners out. It's roughly, if you hire somebody to do it, it could be probably close to half the cost. Um, if you do it yourself or capable of doing it yourself, you know, that's then more than half the cost. Um, if we pay for the concrete. Yeah, good question. Any others?
All right, okay. Well, thank you, Dale. Appreciate it very much. Appreciate the work that you and your team do.
Thank you, guys.
And this is gonna be a, I know it's been quite an ordeal, but this project once completed will be something you can look back on and, and you'll all be very proud of.
Yeah, it's been a good project.
Just very much like the brick uh, to Grand Street project that you guys pulled off. I mean, you know, I, I'm proud of it every time I drive on it, you know, you know.
I think.
Yeah, that was.
I don't really want to do it again, but.
Well. Well, you sat here and told us you were gonna, what you were gonna do, and I had to admit, I was shaking my head going, wow, I really hope he can pull that off, but uh, you sure did. And, and uh, the amount of people you got out to help on that project was amazing, so.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fun to wa, I mean, just working it forward. It's been fun to watch the progress. I mean, we all step outside and you get in more. See what's going on.
Help poor.
I could go help poor, I should.
You know when it's done that I'm, why, I'm gonna be the first one splashing. So uh, so you know, I was trying to encourage you by making it, keeping it cold. You know, when that time happened, but.
So fewer people set up to watch or?
I figured you'd, you'd love to see me out there in the, you know, getting wet and cold. So anyway, thanks again. Appreciate it. It's gonna be cold in May, I promise. Yeah, I'm sure.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're now ready for our business section of our agenda. Uh, first item up is consideration of ordinance thirteen sixty-seven, allowing for the keeping of chickens. And um, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mr. Styles, and, and we've, did you want to comment or are you just here to, to see how it goes or?
Yes, sir, just.
Okay, good enough. All right, Mr. Styles.
Okay, so ordinance thirteen sixty-seven is about keeping chickens in the city limits. Uh, some kind of key features of this, uh, limits chickens uh, to female chickens, no roosters. Ten chickens per lot under fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, there's not a ton of lots that are above fifteen thousand square feet um, in the interior of the city. Some of the out, outer lots are a little bit bigger, could potentially do more. Um, so what we have and, and it's provision you see in a lot of these ordinances for every thousand feet above the fifteen thousand, um, you, you're allowed one chicken for every thousand feet. Uh, and we set the total number of chickens at fifteen. Completely arbitrary, pretty consistent with what we see in other communities, but it, it is arbitrary. So if you wanted to change that, you could. Um, the total in square footage allowance are consistent, but like I say, you can change those. Um, so chickens have to be kept on the property, so there's not really, you have to provide some sort of containment for the chickens. You can't free range them and let them run around the neighborhood. Um, they have to be dry, kept in a clean, dry, and sanitary area. Um, the chickens have to be ten feet from the property lines, uh, and a minimum of fifty feet from an adjoining structure, so.
Well, you say occupied building.
Occupied building, yeah. So it, you, you can be close to a shed, but if you can't be close, closer than fifty feet to a house, a church, or school, that type of thing. The coops and shelters have to be clean with no perceptible odor, uh, and there's a noise in there, so where the noise can't be disturbing to someone of a reasonable sensibility, which we'll have to litigate that if it comes up. What's reasonable sensibility? You know, but pretty common language there. There's really no impact to us uh, from a municipal court's perspective. We did, uh, we did have some, some things in there. And if there's any applicable fees in there, that could happen. Um, so as it's presented, doesn't really present any issues from a staff perspective. Um, it's again, the, the number of chickens seems pretty reasonable, I think. Um, there were some communities that had a lot more. There were some that were less than that, so. It is kind of where we kind of landed somewhere in the middle. So uh, if you're wanting to move forward with this, it would be uh, an action to adopt ordinance three sixty, thirteen sixty-seven and authorize the mayor to sign. Any questions about those? There's no registration or anything like that. Um, and it would turn anybody who currently has chickens, you know, in violation of the current ordinance, we would, basically, they'd be allowed to keep, keep their chickens.
Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen sixty-seven, allowing for the keeping of chickens within the city limits of Hillsborough. Councilman McCarty moves.
Okay.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Um, in this case, I, I do have one question that I should have brought up before I asked for the motion, but I'll address this to uh, Andrew.
Yeah.
This does not supersede any existing neighborhood covenants, correct?
No, no, I have no effect on that. So this is just at a city level. If there are homeowners association covenants that prohibit chickens within that association, that, that will still apply in that area, and this will not affect that at all.
Okay. Everybody clear on that? And I think we only have one.
There's two.
Two, 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 okay, in town. All right, so uh, we will now poll the council. Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Okay, his hand with Councilman Driggers absent, that uh, ordinance is adopted, three zero, and will be signed, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, and uh, that, that, that's a good citizen. Exactly what you should do, and I appreciate it.
Just appreciate you guys taking the time to look into it and uh, get it resolved pretty quickly.
Well.
Don't forget to bring in some eggs.
Okay, next item is consideration of resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five, establishing the sump pump amnesty program, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've been kind of talking about this for at least two, two or three meetings before now. So this is kind of the authorizing piece of this program. So what it would do is we would um, be giving out surveys. We'd include those in the next round of water bills. If it got approved tonight, we would look at putting into the next round of um water and utility bills. So we go out, we're, we're trying to uh, get people to self-report kind of their status, or if they don't know their status, to provide that to us. Um, they would be able to send that into us, and we would collect a list, and we'd have a six-month period according to the resolution to where uh, people could report that back into us. Of course, we want to get it as quickly as possible. Um, and then from there, we would have, um, you know, we develop the list and then go and, and begin to do remediation of these. We have contractor who feels like they can do it for, for four hundred dollars as a connection. Uh, we put the limit in here as five hundred dollars a connection. Uh, the city would pay for that work. You know, we have to have visual evidence and proof and as drawn or as built drawings for each of the ones that we correct. Uh, a homeowner could opt to do it themselves, but the city wouldn't pay anything toward that. Um, so there'd be kind of some some uh, benefit in choosing to go with the city contractor on that, because you know, we, with that perspective, we can control sort of what happens with that. Um, there's also a, an inspection piece in this so that we would allow for um, city. We have the authorization under the current ordinance, but we would have a program in place where the uh, city building inspector, someone who's uh, competent in, in doing that, a designated city, city building instructor to come out and do uh, inspections of these sewers before homes are sold. Um, and anytime there's kind of a change in, in ownership, those inspections would have, we'd have a certificate of inspection that would be good for three years. Um, and we would take that and track all that within our, we've talked about putting into our billing uh, software and, and kind of tagging it to the property so that we can keep track of what's, what's going on with that. Um, right, and then also the, excuse me. The resolution also puts in uh, the penalty for this. We have, we have authorization under the city code to, to enforce this, but we put a penalty on there of five hundred dollars uh, for the illegal connection and ten dollars a day for every day that it's in, still in violation. Um, so people can, could potentially be charged with that if we, if we determine that they have an illegal connection, uh, gives them kind of, this is kind of the stick versus the carrot, uh, part of this program to where, you know, we want to make sure that this sump pump or uh, foundation drains are no longer connected to the sanitary sewer system. So the entire purpose of this is to help us with our I N I consent decree from K D H E and the E P A, uh, which is of course the rainwater that gets into the system. Um, we estimate that you can have up to four hundred gallons a minute per for, for these connections. And so uh, we're, we're kind of roughly estimating ten percent of, of the populate, or ten percent of the homes in the system uh, could potentially have these connections. So somewhere around fifty thousand dollars, but we're not a hundred percent sure. We're always gonna have people who aren't gonna report it. Um, you know, they're not going to, to do that, or they may not know and just not do it out of, of not knowing. Um, that's kind of the point of the inspection process is that we can catch these things when they, when they come through. So um, that's the intention. Uh, we're hopeful to, to get pretty good response with this. Um, there is a cost to us, but we felt like it's a better investment than going in and doing a million and a half dollar rerouting project of our lift stations to meet this consent decree. So this goes along with our, our sewer lining projects, our manhole um, projects where we're lifting manholes up uh, and all the other steps we're trying to take to, to accommodate this, this issue and try to beat this to consent decree, or at least come into compliance. I shouldn't say beat, come into compliance with the consent decree. So uh, that's the presentation with it. I have any questions about it? I'd be more than happy to, to try to answer those.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five, establishing the sump pump amnesty program. Make that motion. Councilman Lowen moves. Good second by Councilman McCarty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman By.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
The uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Uh, third item is lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank for the purchase of equipment, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So I had a couple of conversations with Mike Paget this afternoon about this. We, we do have an issue that we should probably table this um, until we get it resolved. Uh, the issue is that the dump trunk, the tandem axle dump truck, uh, they won't, they won't issue the, the lease purchase agreement until we have the specific truck picked out. Uh, Dale has been looking at trucks and has, has been kind of shopping around, but still hasn't identified that truck yet. Uh, and so in order to include it into this lease purchase, we would have to have that information, the serial numbers and everything. So uh, they weren't willing to issue that on a kind of to be determined basis. Uh, and so my advice at this point is to table this until we can identify that truck and get council approval to make that purchase.
Do we need to vote on our tabling, or is that something?
Yeah, go ahead and vote on it.
Okay, so would I have a motion then to table this item? Councilman By moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item three, the lease purchase agreement with Central National Bank will be tabled to a future meeting. Uh, item four is approval of Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars thirty cents, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've got a couple of fire trucks in here. Uh, we have annual maintenance that has to occur on those. Uh, oil filters, changing things like that, and then they do an inspection for us. And then we also have a patrol vehicle for the police department, so it's kind of an inspection. Um, we had some issues with the lights and communication codes. It's thrown some codes, it looks like, so uh, they were able to, to get those cleared out. So the total on that was the eighteen hundred twenty-two dollars and
Thirty cents.
Thirty cents.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars thirty cents.
Right motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those uh, abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay, so that, that's uh, approved. I voted aye because uh, basically we had a tie.
Makes it real, we'll make, yeah.
So that, the mayor votes in the case of a ties. Anyway, we have to have a majority vote, so. Uh, we're now into our discussion item, which is ordinance thirteen sixty-six defining dog confinement on property, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is a continuation of our previous discussion on this. Uh, it's ordinance thirteen sixty-six. We, we kind of assigned it to it. Uh, since we last talked about it, we made two kind of minor changes to this. Um, there was some concern from the police department about the uh, language about securing a dog in an open truck bed. There was a few things, there was some concern that some of our rural residents that come into town uh, may not, may not abide by that. So we added a, a little bit of language there that says that the, that the um dog has to be confined by leash or, or in a crate or in a cage or by some other means, so that that could potentially, there could be some other things that we're, we're not thinking of with that, with regard to that. Uh, and the other thing we made a change on was just more of a technical change. It noted that the um, animal control officer could note if an animal was dangerous, but it's actually municipal court that can make that designation in our system. So we just made that change. Um, so we're, we're in the process of slow walking this because it is a dog related and anything animal related always seems to uh, it needs more time to breathe, I guess, is the way I would say. Um, so what I would suggest is, you know, we can, if we have any more comments or questions about it, we can talk about that now. Uh, but if you're wanting to, to do anything further with this, I would suggest setting a public hearing for the next meeting on April eighteenth, so that we can uh, have a public hearing. If someone wants to come in, they've, they've had a couple of looks at it at this point. Um, it's been in the media, so.
That's be a wise idea.
Yeah. Give it, give it as much room to breathe as possible.
So is that an item we need to vote on for setting a public hearing?
I would recommend.
Okay, so do I have a motion that uh, would, would uh, set April eighteenth, our next regular meeting, we would set a public hearing to review or discuss ordinance thirteen sixty-six defining dog confinement on property. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion?
I won't be at that meeting, so.
Okay, well, hopefully Mr. Driggers will be here, so.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, just, I gue, I get it. You're around for the last dog thing, so.
No, that's not.
I'm kidding.
But I, 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 I can see why I might want to do that.
Yeah, I get that. Okay, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will set a public hearing on ordinance thirteen sixty-six for April fourth, eighteen, eighteenth at uh, six thirty P M. Okay. We are now on to a city administrator report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So we've got, got quite a lot going on. Um, wanted to give you an update. Fire station meeting, we had a first meeting, uh, Councilman By and Councilman McCarty were at that meeting, and we had two representatives from the uh, fire department, the captain, both captains, and then uh, Stan from W D M in uh, And then uh, Stan from W D M in uh. Excuse me, architects. Uh, I think that we had a conversation, I thought it was pretty productive conversation about kind of what the needs are and what needs to happen. Um, Stan, the architect. Kind of assembled those thoughts and sent it back to the fire station uh, committee. On the fire station side, on the fire department side, so that all their, their leadership came to me and talks about that and we get a couple of representatives. So. Uh, we're hoping to have a draft to lay out kind of some of those things and take a look at it. Uh, here fairly shortly there, I know they're working on it right now. So we'll hopefully have something to report back, maybe have another meeting with our group. Uh, before we have it kind of at the council level, so. Uh, moving forward. Uh, county zoning, just to let you know, the planning commission, Marion County Planning Commission sent out a draft revision and it's areas of notification and areas of influence. Proposal uh, planning commission meets next week and we're going to take that up to kind of talk about it. Uh, it's nothing, nothing too dramatic, I guess, but. Uh, I think what we probably will still have a, a need to uh, ask for some extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction in that. They really didn't. Address that part of the issue, so. Uh, we'll have to have private will give and take with them on that and, and kind of figure out what that looks like. Uh, light remodel of the golf course. So we've, we've been having conversations with the restaurant in town. Uh, about moving us to the golf course and we've kind of found with that to be uh, cost prohibitive for everybody involved with that. So. Uh, the major renovations really haven't, aren't really going to move forward. Um, instead, we're doing some upgrades in there, just some upgrading things. Uh, they've already done some painting. Uh, it looks a hundred times better already. Uh, we're talking about maybe doing some flooring and doing all of it in-house and just doing some kind of light remodeling stuff to bring it up to a little bit more modern standard in there. Hasn't been touched since it was built. So it's been, it's been a hot minute since it's had a little bit of T L C. So. Uh, we're going to keep, keep doing that, painting, patching, cleaning up the existing space and kind of moving forward for there with what we can do internally. Uh, I want to let everybody know we sent out letters to landlords. We're, we're requesting information, updated information on their properties. Um. Kind of information from them. We've had, we've had policies in place that have been sort of. Fifty fifty enforced on some of the landlord situations. Um, and so we've kind of drove a stake in the ground and say, here's how we're going to do this from here on out. And. And so we're, we're hoping to get some of that information back. Uh, we're going to revise the list of proper or the list of landlords so that people can contact that, try to make that a little easier. Uh, and try to make that process a little smoother with them. We've had a few issues with some landlords, um, and, and utility bills and how those gets handled. So. We're trying to refocus that and get everybody on the same page. Uh, housing focus groups, Wichita State, Public Policy Management Center is working on doing our housing needs assessment uh, for the R A, R H I D. Uh, they're going to be hosting some focus groups in early April. I've given them some names for that. I think we're going to do most of them virtually. Uh, and then they've got some people that you're doing interviews with too. So we're going to have that going. It's moving fine. Uh, we're switching our backup system for the server. We've got, had some issues with that. Um, we're still having some technical issues, but we're working through some of that. This is a cloud-based system, modern cloud-based system, so we don't actually have to physically change out tapes and drives, which is great for us. Um, it. Cuts our downtime to hours versus, you know, days uh, when we have issues. So. That's a little more expensive, but I think it's worth that. And they do significantly more security checks on our data. Uh, which right now we're not doing as many as I would like. So. Uh, if we ever do end up with something, this, this will put us in a better position to recover from that. So K H E also approved our, our sole source, source purchase for the chlorine dioxide unit we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, for the water project, we applied for that and got some source. Uh, so that should allow us to get that procured and up and running in the summertime. Uh, so you'll probably be seeing. A request to make that purchase through, through the loan funds uh, at the next meeting or maybe the first in May. So. Uh, we're working on that. Uh, we had a meeting with Mirror Inc. on the stand program. Uh, the mayor was there, police chief. Superintendent of schools, the principal from the high school. Uh, we just talked about the stand program. It's a drug. Drug prevention empowerment kind of program. Uh, I think we're all in agreement. It's excellent program. We're trying to figure out how that works. Um, as far as the funding goes, we have opioid money we can put into there, but there's kind of an ongoing cost. So. Um, we're, we're going to see how that progresses. Uh, we've sent some questions off to him today and hopefully we'll be able to get that back. Uh, kind of get that moving. Um, real excited that the, the museum is hosting a traveling exhibit from Smoky Hill Museum. It's called Notorious. Uh, it's going to be all here, it's going to be here all through the month. It's, it's at the um. The schoolhouse. Uh, we've had, we had a couple of classes go through it today. Um, it's really cool exhibit. It's about Kansasans who are notorious. Uh, for various reasons, either good or bad. Uh, it's really, it's pretty cool. It's got some interactive pieces to it. It, it's a lot of fun. It's got a, like a scavenger hunt thing for kids to do. So. Uh, I know the seventh grade and I went through it either now this morning. Um, so. It's, it's really cool. I'd encourage anybody to come out. It's. Uh, would encourage everybody to come out and take a look at it. Uh, damage at the park and we proved the park shelter, chimney, uh, the shelters. Uh, there were some issues with the chimney over there in the east shelter. Somebody had physically ripped the grill out of the stone. Uh, and ran and dropped it on the ground. Uh, it's a cast iron grill. So somebody ate their Wheaties or a couple of somebodies. To get that thing out of there, but they ripped it out, completely destroyed it. Um. Which was okay. We, we had some issues, structural issues with that fireplace. Anyway, we're planning on. You know, figuring out a way to make it inoperable because it is kind of unsafe. And so. We took that opportunity to wipe that whole thing out. So I guess they kind of did us a favor. Um, and then we. Fixed the roof line too, so that the top of the chimney, which was where we were having some issues, could be, could be taken out and just kind of made flat with a chimney room. So the chimney on the exterior is still there and we, we've kind of sealed it up on the interior and, and. Re-blocked it there and we'll repour some concrete and it'll just be just gone. Um, but it'll be. You know, I guess an improvement, uh, but it's kind of an unintentional thing. And we did file a police report, police report on it, but I don't. I don't suspect we'll have any, any takers on there and get anywhere with that, but. Just want to let everybody know that. So that's going to be part of that. Uh, Spring Branch is actually doing the work. It's kind of fortuitous. They were there to do the work anyways, so. Uh, sales tax, we've got our March distribution, got the sales tax breakdown there. Uh, seventy-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars fifty-one cents. So thirteen percent above where we were this time last year. Um. To remind everybody, last year was a record year, so hopefully uh, things continue moving forward there. Uh, there was some legislation that we've, we advocate, well, there were several pieces of legislation we were advocating with our, our representatives and senators about, but one of them. Was about removing, uh, they want to take the sales tax on food down to zero and. Uh, they had worked out last year when they started this process to not touch the local option sales taxes that are on a lot of those things. So. The local option sales tax we use to pay for the pool would be how kind of that works for us. Um, but they were trying to remove all that, this legislative session, and we talked about it last time, maybe about ten mils. Give or take if that was to go away for us. And so, um. I think that that seems like it's dead in the water as of today, late this afternoon, but I'm not. I wouldn't count our chickens until they're hatched on that one, so. Uh, you just have to watch your, watch, watch your back, I guess, whenever the legislature.
And that's, that's where the league is very helpful, you know, of, of watching our back and then they're, they're on it and. I certainly have reached out to both Senator Willmore and, and Representative Owens and I did get feedback from Representative Owens that he would. Not support uh, taking away that local option, so. Um, and he felt like the majority of the uh, of the legislature would not, would not agree to it, so. That's what we know right now.
And then I also have a, I had a, I had to ask Andrew if we can, can we add a land bank meeting to this meeting even though.
Sure.
Okay. So we've got a land base. Okay, we'll have to recess in the land. Like I have a, an offer to purchase two lots that we need to talk about, so.
Okay.
Got it in this afternoon.
All right. Well, then uh, without further ado, we will recess into a land bank meeting. And as a chairman of the land bank, I will call that meeting to order. And Mr. Styles, we will let you uh, explain what you're, what, what we're up against.
So we've got a, a couple of lots that are not, definitely not our prime best lots. Uh, I'm going to try to pull them up real quick. Uh, Ospos, if you're familiar with where Ospos is, Chuck Malby up on the north part of. Uh, the A M P I property on the east building. Uh, the city owns some property. To the north of there, which is in the Hillsborough uh, Business Park flat. Uh, the street ends where Midway Motors is, uh, but these lots are, are further east than that. So Mr. Malby is interested in uh, purchasing two of those lots. Uh, they are not, as I say, super high prime lots for us. But they, they have got some drainage issues on them. There's a couple of questions outstanding about where uh, utilities are. There was an old fiber optic line in there. We think might be abandoned, but we're not sure. We haven't. We hadn't intended on selling this, um, but he, he brought it up to me today and so. Uh, let me just pull this over so you can kind of see. So. So this is, I don't know if it shows back up. This is the property, this is where Chuck rents from us. Um, Mr. Malby rents this piece from us. Uh, it's in this east building and these are the two lots, which he's interested in purchasing from us. Um.
What's in the center there?
This is the cell phone tower. So it's carved out on its own piece property. Um, you can kind of tell there's, there's a drive that runs through here. It's not a platted street. It's just a drive that. Uh, we have used in the past and a few other people have used in the past and, and kind of renovating or utilizing this property. This dark spot here is a low spot where water collects. Uh, so there's definitely some water issues on this. Uh, there's a couple of power poles in here uh, that have easements on them. So I mean, this is not a. This is not a uh, blue chip piece of property for us by any stretch of imagination. Uh, we, the way we've priced all this property, it's ten thousand dollars an acre. This property right here. Um, is just under an acre at ninety-nine point nine nine acres. This one's just over an acre at one point one two acres. Uh, if we followed the formula, this one would be nine thousand nine hundred dollars and this one would be eleven thousand two hundred dollars. Um, Mr. Malby's uh, has offered ten thousand for both. Um, to purchase both. I don't see.
Ten thousand total?
Ten thousand total for both.
So five thousand.
Five thousand per lot, yeah. Um, and he actually brought in four thousand dollars in cash as, as kind of a. Um.
Earnest money?
Yeah, earnest money for that. So we're holding four thousand dollars pending decision of this group. Um.
What are the, what are the, what are his intentions?
Yeah, so he wants to, um. At some point he wants to, to add on a. Of, I don't know how much I should say about it, a facility.
Uh, he wants to put a building on, on this property?
Building on the front part of it, because this is, there's a. There's a markers for uh, fiber optic line right here. So thinking of putting something here. And, and over here in the future, so.
Okay.
Now.
Are there any, are there any concerns from, from our part regarding the drainage issues and some of those things?
Uh, this would be an as-is kind of transaction because it's lower than the asking price. Um. I, there, there are, that definitely needs to be regraded.
Well, I'm not talking about the city being responsible for that. I'm talking about the property owner being responsible.
Yeah, it'd be responsible. I mean, the only issue is that this is a blow right here and I, I spoke with Dale a little bit about this earlier. Um. They reset some of this dirt for the Midwest project, Midway or Midway Motors project. Um, so they, they stole some dirt from over here. And it just needs to be regraded. Um, there's, there's kind of a driveway through this piece, but. You know, it's, it is not.
Well, there won't be a driveway anymore.
Yeah, there wouldn't be any, there wouldn't be anything there. I think the, the initial piece is, you know, he's going to do some, he's going to park some trucks here. Um, and then. You know, as it, as he has the money to do the development, he'll, he'll add that facility. I wouldn't expect it to happen overnight, for sure.
What would be the counter offer then?
Well, that would be something you'd want to, if you wanted to do that, we could talk about that.
Because that's ten thousand dollars less than what we're asking. That's a lot of money.
Sure, yeah. I would say that there's no. Uh, there's no street infrastructure there, so.
Oh, I, yeah, I get it.
You know, there's a, it's, it's. These are not the super desirable piece. These two are probably the best lots in that. Um.
Now, are those lots in the TIF district?
This, these would be, yeah.
And you might explain what that means.
So it's, it's a tax increment finance district, so any kind of improvement that gets made on there, any increment of tax that's. In, increases over the, the amount that's basically the baseline there. Goes back to pay for the infrastructure that, that was input into that project. So that road infrastructure, the water infrastructure and sewer. Uh, tied to it, Midway Motors has basically been the only one who's paid any of that, other than the city.
So in terms of, if that's in lieu of property taxes, correct?
Mm-hmm, whatever it generates in addition. So it's. You know, the, you know, if there was a building to be built there, it would, it would contribute to that. I would say that the TIF is almost, almost paid, so.
But right now that, that property is contributing nothing.
Zero.
Terms of, of.
Yeah.
Value to the city.
Correct. We actually have to maintain it, and so it. It doesn't take much, but it is something that we have to do.
Questions?
Would that change their access to that cell tower? That's what I'm wondering if that's roads in there.
I think initially, yes, but they have access off of there. So, you know, there's not, you're not terminating anybody's access. You may make it slightly less convenient. But. Um, yeah, there's no, no issue with that. There was some thought there, there's a fiber optic markers out here, but they thought that that maybe had been relocated. Um, it is not T C, T C T's fiber, so. Uh, must be some existing provider.
Any other questions? Hearing none, um, would somebody care to, to make a motion to approve the sale of these two lots? At the price of five thousand dollars per. Okay, we have a motion by councillor McCarty.
Second.
We have a second by councillor Lowen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, so we will uh, up the. Land Bank has approved the sale of those lots for the price of five thousand dollars per lot, as is.
Yeah. And so uh, just to remind everybody kind of how, how land bidding sales go, there'll have to be a publication. Um, and we won't be able to close on it for thirty days after that. Be an opportunity for anybody to, um. Speak their mind on that transaction, if there is such to be spoken. Um. It's just part of the state law on the bank property.
I appreciate Mr. Malby, uh, you know, making that, making us that offer that to me says that he intends to uh. Continue to uh, have the future of his business in Hillsborough, which is a good thing.
Hmm.
So we appreciate that. Is there any other business that needs to come before the land bank?
Not at this point. I do have a couple other, couple other pending offers, so I'll probably more action on that at a future meeting.
Okay. Well, hearing that there's no other uh, resolution, I will close the land bank meeting and we will uh, re uh, re uh, enter the city council meeting. And uh, where we're at now is uh, item H, which is our last public comment opportunity. Is there anyone from the public that would care to address the council? Hearing none, we'll close that uh, opportunity and move on to council comments. Councillor Lowen.
Um, just heard recently that um, Dolores Dolkey had some physical issues.
I'm glad you brought that up and I would say that I would ask everyone to keep uh, Dolores in your prayers. She is in uh, intensive care at Wichita and uh, she's had some serious medical. Medical issues and so. Her, she and her family and friends need uh, need our prayers. So thank you, David. I appreciate you bringing that up. Do you have anything else you'd like to say? Councillor McCarty?
Mr.
Councillor by.
Uh, like you said earlier, we had our first fire committee meeting and I thought it went really well and um, pretty excited to see. Uh, how that goes. Uh, my other thing was, so pickup line, they were the ones that were going to move over to. So are they, I know they sold their building. Are they staying in Hillsborough?
It's not their building. It wasn't.
Okay, okay, okay.
Uh, we've, we've talked with them and offered some assistance in finding another location. We haven't, we have something that could potentially work.
Sweet.
Um. So it's, it's kind of in their court at this point.
Okay.
Still to be determined.
To be determined.
No, I was just curious.
No, it's all right.
So, yeah.
Okay, since David brought up the comment I was going to make, which I do definitely appreciate. Again, Dolores served the city for. I think twenty-four years as mayor in total. Not all contiguous, but, but certainly served the city and served for long and well. So. We wish her the best and, and wish her a, a, a recovery. Is there any other business that needs to come before the city council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.